Go ahead and start and we can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Sodex City Council meeting for Monday, June 28th, 2021. The clerk, please call the roll.
Leo.
Oh, you didn't.
Here. Stanton.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, just to jump in quick, please state your residency, city, county, and state.
Leo here, Sagatuck, Alligan, Michigan.
And? Here Sagatuck, Alligan County, Michigan.
Becken.
Here, Douglas, Alligan County, Michigan.
Truster.
Here in Sagatuck, Alligan County, Michigan.
Peterson.
Why is Fred messing this up? Peterson, Sagatuck, Alligan County, Michigan.
Lewis.
Here Sagatuck, Allen County, Michigan.
Dean.
Here Sagatuck, Alligan County, Michigan.
That is everybody.
Thank you. We have a full form for tonight's meeting. Next order of business is approval of the minutes from the regular city council meeting of June 14. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Second, that's Lewis.
Okay, I have a motion by Dean, seconded by Lewis to approve the minutes as presented. Any comments, corrections, discussion? Chris Peterson?
Yes, on number 18, it says boards, commissions, and committee reports, Scott Dean, the planning commission update. I think it was the Mount Bald Head as opposed to the planning commission.
Good catch, Chris. Thank you.
Noted.
Noted, okay. Any other, any other comments, questions, corrections by council? If not, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Dean.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Truster.
Yes.
Becken.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes.
Leo.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Mayor's comments, just a brief. Thanks to Scott at our DPW and Ryan and staff. We experienced close to record rainfalls over a period of time last week. And I think it's a pretty fair to say our stormwater sewer system acted, acted pretty well. We had a few little glitches from what I know, but everything went pretty, pretty smooth in our downtown area especially. So I do understand we just recently went through some comprehensive clean out of the stormwater grates and cleaned up some of the drains. So it was, that came in a timely fashion. So moving on, city manager comments, Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council and guests. Yeah, so I, I took a chance to drive around during the rain events, see what was going on. Everything looked good. That was my first major rain event in Sagatuck. So I was pleased to see that everything was flowing as it should. The city manager's report is on page six for those who are following along. Thank you, Padley. We went over this report in detail at your workshop meeting, but I do want to mention the, the zip. Well, first I should mention the, the fact that we have Suzie. And I don't want to put too, too final point on this, but Suzie is our one seasonal employee who's servicing our downtown area, servicing our trash and our toilets downtown. Again, if you see Suzie, please smile and wave and say hello and thank you. The other thing I want to mention is the ZBA meeting. I know there's been a lot of emails flying back and forth the last couple, couple days. So just want to mention that they had their meeting as scheduled. And they ultimately postponed their meeting to the 14th of July, which again, happens to be my birthday. Hint, hint, I like smoked fish. And so one of, a couple of takeaways from that meeting, they did not take any action. So you know, there's three items in front of them. They didn't take any action on any of them. And two of the things they did request, one was to have an outside planning and zoning consultant be brought in to help them with their decision making. The other thing was outside counsel. Bring in outside counsel. And so I have a meeting scheduled with the chairman tomorrow, Tuesday. And I'll be talking with Bob about the outcome of that meeting. And we'll review all the details of what was discussed and where they, where they're going with it. I, I think, to be candid, the, the easier part would be to bring in a outside planning and zoning consultant. To bring in outside attorney in at this point might be a little bit challenging. I'm just going to leave those comments there and we can talk about it a little bit later on in the agenda. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Moving on to agenda changes.
Mayor, sorry, this is Garnet. I had a real quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, all good. On, on the milfoil, do you know if that, with all the rain and everything, did they get that touch up done on the 24th?
They did. Yeah, they did come back and yep.
Great, thanks.
Okay, other council questions or comments? City's managed report, okay. If done, if none, we'll move on to agenda changes. Any additions from, from Ryan and from staff, yourself?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, none. Anything council would like to add? Okay, thank you. We'll be moving on to guest speakers this evening. Speaker number one, Brett Enfield from Allen County Sheriff's Department. Brett?
Hi, everybody. It looked like it was a busy weekend. I was off last week on vacation. Just talking to the deputies and stuff, it doesn't sound like there's many major issues. If you guys have any questions or anything, I'd be happy to answer those questions.
Counsel, any questions for lieutenant? Okay, I would assume that the incident report will, will be sent to us as a follow-up, Brett?
Yeah, I sent those to Ryan morning and Padley, I believe. So I think she, I got her out of office. So I sent it to Ryan, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Chris.
Thank you. I do have a question. Brett, have you seen any change in things since we've gone to 100% open now?
I talked to the deputies over the, that worked over the weekend and stuff. Yeah, they said that, you know, obviously the rain and stuff. But yeah, it hasn't been any significant changes and stuff like that. I think the, the biggest take they had is the, you know, trouble of the people maybe postified and employees into work and stuff, especially during the week and stuff. They seen some downturn in, you know, some of the stores being open and restaurants and so forth. But other than that, everything's been kind of running smooth, knock on wood, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council person have any questions for Brett? Okay, if none, we'll move on. Brett, thanks for joining us this evening. Next up, Dan Fox with representing Sodex Township Fire. Dan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. Hear me?
Yes, you're coming in fine, thanks.
Okay. I'll be reporting on two meetings that we've had since, since I reported on the last one, being on 21 June and on 24 June. The second one is a budget, was the budget public hearing and whatever, and that will be brief. I'll cover that at the end of this. In the 21st of June meeting, in order, we reviewed and approved accounts payable of $102,000. During $65.75, we reviewed the current fiscal year's budget, which stands at, stood at that point at 100% of revenues and 92% of budgeted expenditures. In the chief's report to the fire board, he reviewed the following. Incident reports, which I believe have already been furnished to you, but just summarizing for the, for the, the month covered, the four weeks covered, an 8% increase in incidents, including 17 calls in a single weekend, and increases in motor vehicle incidents in part related to the ongoing I-196 construction, and also showing anticipated summer seasonal increases that we see each year. The township fire department hosted a quote, "sleep and heavenly peace" event during this time, building bunk beds for children. The goal of that organization, which has that name, is no child sleeps on the floor, which kind of gratifying. And by the way, you should know that the events, the, the fire district, simply loan space are, the firefighters were not involved in actually building the, the bunk beds. But those, those volunteers were coordinated by the Spencer, who is Alligan County Sheriff's Deputy and Sagatuck Assigned Janelle Hagerty. During the time, the district completed 101 rental inspections, three rental re-inspections, 100, I'm sorry, 11 business and hotel fire and safety surveys, and conducted 23 plan reviews related to new construction. And then construction inspections as well, 12 more of those. Additional pandemic-related grant was received by the, by the fire district for $18,935 related to helping to cover public health-related payroll reimbursement. And the chief noted donations from continuing donation, a very generous donation from Lake Vista Super Value of a pallet of bottled water. Chief has said he can't remember the last time the fire district had to pay for water that that donation has been ongoing, which is pretty kind. And they also received a donation of a canvas cover for, for equipment on the fire boat, and that's an $800 cover that was donated from Accrue at Row, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, which is a, a custom canvas. Under unfinished business, we discussed pending legal settlement, which I think since has been settled regarding water supply to development, to a development underway in the township. We also discussed future fire district, fire department building expansion. We took no action on this because the issue really needs further both professional study as well as some level of community input on, among other things, ambulance services and the possibility of undertaking those and the costs, additional costs associated with this, as well as most implications, both for taking on ambulance services and any long-term real estate capital kind of operation. So those remain under consideration and study. Under new business, the board congratulated Chief Janik on his receipt of the Alligan County Eagle Award as the county volunteer of the year. A proclamation from the fire board will be forthcoming on that. And the fire board agreed to return, return to in-person meetings beginning with its meeting July, I think. I'm not sure the date, third week in July, I think. We, we recorded communications, under communications, a thank you note from the Sandcastle Documentary Film Crew, which related to the district's helping with one thing and another, is those people did their work out Singapore areas, I understood it. That's a 2022 release with the Sagatuck premiere, I'm told, if you're interested. That was the end, that was concluded the meeting of the 21st of June. On the 24th, we first approved the final current fiscal budget adjustment for this current fiscal year. We then, the chair opened the public hearing on the proposed 21, 22 fiscal year budget. Held that, held that open, or that hearing without comment, closed the hearing, and upon conclusion of it, voted to approve the proposed Sagatuck Township 21, 2021, 22 fiscal year budget. And I would note, thanks, ongoing thanks to Peter for his more than capable work in, in helping on the finances. If there are any questions, I'll either be happy to answer them myself with my limited knowledge or get you an answer from someone who has more knowledge.
Hey, thanks, Dan. A council and questions for Dan Fox? Okay, if none, we'll move on. Thanks again, Dan, for the report. Next agenda item is public comment. This is the opportunity for members of the audience to address council this evening. We ask that you ask to be identified, identify yourself by name and community of residence. Please limit your comments to three minutes on agenda items only. There'll be a second opportunity for open comments or questions at the end of the meeting. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address council this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Yes.
Jim Lindsay, Sagatuck, Alligan County, Michigan. Because Ryan Heiss brought up the matter of the ZBA meeting last week, which I dialed into via Zoom, I wanted just to make some brief comments regarding that. I.
Jim, excuse me, if I could interrupt you. Request that you ask that at the end of the meeting, at the second comment portion, this, even though it was a comment by the city manager, it's really not an agenda item. So just following our, our procedures and rules, I just respectfully ask that you maybe bring that up to the second comment section, please.
Okay, I'll, I'll hold off till the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you. Any other comments from the public, please? Badly, can you help me out? See anyone out there?
No raised hands at this time.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We'll close the public comment portion of the, the meeting at this time. We have no consent agenda. Next order of business is requests for payments. Do I have a motion to approve the accounts payables as presented?
Mr. Mayor.
Ken?
I would move to approve the accounts payable in the amount of $72,668.33.
Second, second by, okay, we have a motion by Truster, seconded by Peterson to approve accounts payable as presented. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question, either Peter or Ryan. The $27,214 expense for milfoil treatment, was that the city's portion of that or all the revenue, including the private people who kicked in?
That's everybody. The city's portions and the private, private portions.
Okay, thank you.
That'll be for two applications, Peter?
Oh, that's just for the first one. There'll be a second bill, I guess, that big in July, or whenever they do the second one. That's just round one.
All right, okay. Thanks.
Excuse me, just one more comment. At some point, we might want to clarify what the, actually what the city expenditure was as opposed to the total expenditure. Not right now, Peter, you don't have to do that.
Too late. Oh, we can ask another question, but oh, there he comes.
What was the question? I'm sorry, I got the bills with me.
Well, you don't need to add it up now, Peter. I was just saying at some point, when we report the, the total amount here, we should clarify, what was the amount of taxpayer money that went into this and then the amount of private, you know, the private contributions that went into it? I need to do it now.
You want to pass, Peter? You want to, you got it right at your fingertips.
Peter, if you're talking, you're muted.
Okay.
Moving, moving on.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Peter off the hook on that one.
Okay.
All right, I've, I've got a question, Mayor.
Yeah.
Unrelated to milfoil and math at the top of your head. Just real quick, maybe Peter can help me answer this one. Item number 10, Fliessen-VanderBrink Engineering for $744. I'm just curious what that was for.
That was for sewer connection on Maple and some storm assistance for the Windjammer condos association.
All right, very cool.
Also, it was for a sewer connection on Maple Street for new construction.
All right, thanks, Peter.
And I have the answer for aquatic doctors. Basically, the city's portion for the big acres out in the middle of the river was 13,300. And the street ends were about $1,100. There was a $400 permit fee to Eagle, and the private residents paid $12,300.
Okay, thank you.
Full information. That's good. Scott?
And Peter, didn't we get a very generous donation from a former residence family?
Yeah, a gentleman electus requested $10,000 here during the winter to help pay for that.
Yes, thank you.
Great.
Okay.
Well, question clarification, then where did that $10,000 come in then? So that, we don't have the 10, the 11,000 for taxpayer money then?
Well, yeah, there was $10,000 during, it's in order, the, the revenue side, it's under miscellaneous donations on the, the revenue side. So.
Okay.
So yeah, I mean, it's not deducted. That's what the bill was. And so we had a private donation of 10 grand. So the taxpayers wanted the rest of, for the, I guess, the first round.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I have one question for clarification, either Peter or Ryan regarding Grattan Township Training Clerk 44625. I think I know what it is, but I want to clarify it.
Ryan? Peter.
The new city clerk was, the first week she was at, at training for the clerk institute, and her former employer had paid for the room and board. We thought it was not fair to them since she's left there. So they had paid for the training and we paid for her lodging for under education for the current clerk. So basically, we're just reimbursing her lodging for the week.
Okay. All right, thanks for the clarification. Any other questions by council? If none, clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
All right, Truster?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Next agenda item is the public hearing on our upcoming budget fiscal year 2021, 2022, which starts July 1st of this year. I'd like to review the public hearing procedure for council and the public. Mayor will be calling the hearing to order, followed by a budget overview by staff. We will then ask for public comment regarding the upcoming proposed budget, budget in the form of requesting supporting comments from audience in any letters, opposing comments from audience in any letters, general comments, an opportunity for general comments, such thing as supporting, opposing, or just general questions or comments. And then moving on, if there is comments by the public, we ask that the participants identify themselves by name and if they are a citizen or non-citizen of the city of Sagatuck. All questions and comments shall be addressed to the mayor. All comments and questions shall be limited to three minutes. After the public comment portion is closed by the mayor, council comment will be solicited. The mayor will then close the hearing and will have an action item on the budget later in the meeting. So those are the kind of the rules of the road. So at this time, I'll call the public hearing procedure to order for our public hearing for fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget. This time, I open the floor to any comments from the audience supporting our budget.
Mr. Mayor or clerk, do you need a roll call to open the meeting?
We, we could probably do that. Yes.
Do we, do we need it?
I believe we do, Brian.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're making a comment or a motion there, Ken?
Yes, I move that we convene a public meeting regarding the budget.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Truster, seconded by Lewis to open the public hearing for the budget. Clerk, please call the roll.
Truster?
Yes.
Sorry, Madam Clerk, I hate to do this. Please, city, county, and state. Sorry, it's the worst.
No, it's okay.
Where are we?
So Truster?
Truster, Sagatuck, Alligan County, Michigan, yes.
Lewis?
Yes, Sagatuck, Allen County, Michigan.
Stanton?
Yes, Sagatuck, Alligan County, Michigan.
Becken?
Yes, Douglas, Alligan County, Michigan.
Leo?
Yes, Sagatuck, Alligan, Michigan.
Dean?
Yes, Sagatuck, Alligan County, Michigan.
Peterson?
Yes, Sagatuck, Alligan County, Michigan.
The motion to open the public hearing on our upcoming budget is approved unanimously. I'm calling the hearing to order and asking for any supporting comments from people in the audience. So anybody wishes to comment regarding supporting the budget as presented? Please ask to be recognized?
I don't have any raised hands.
Okay. Did we receive any letters of support?
No, Mr. Mayor, we did not.
All right, moving on. This is the opportunity to your opposing comments from our audience regarding the budget. Do I have any comments opposing the upcoming budget?
Still no raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any letters opposing the budget?
None received, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Final comments regarding just general comments, opportunities of public to speak regarding either supporting, opposing, or any general comments regarding the budget, or any comments forthcoming, please.
Again, no more raised hands.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next portion of the hearing. Any, so we'll close the public comment portion, first of all. And now we will ask for council comment regarding the budget. Any council comment, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Chris?
Yes, on the front page, if you could add my name, that would be appreciated. Garnet's listed twice, so stake one of her out, put me, put me in.
Okay. Certainly, they're willing to do that, Chris. All right, any other comment by, by council?
Mayor, this is Garnet.
Yeah.
So I just, I wanted to thank staff and Peter for the time that they put into this. I know Peter spent time with, with each of us going through the budget, which I really appreciate. And because I always have a ton of questions and he's always so patient with me. And, and Ryan, thank you for revising the narrative. It's perfect. Thank you.
Other council comment? Okay, if none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Sorry, motion by Louis, seconded by Peterson. Kirk, please call a roll on a motion.
All right, Louis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. The motion to close a public budget, public hearing passes unanimously. Moving on, next agenda item, our new business agenda, first item of business is a new assessor contract. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item was reviewed at your Wednesday workshop. I think we have our new, well, soon to be new, maybe, assessor on the line. So I will turn it over to Peter and the potential new assessor.
Tony Meyer, he's on the, down here somewhere. So if he can unmute himself, he can introduce and he'll tell you who he's going to staff here. He's going to be the assessor of record and all of his details and biography is enclosed about his company that he has and all of his experience with assessing. So Tony, are you out there? You can go ahead. Anything you have to say, everybody has your contract in front of them that you presented to the city.
Okay, thanks. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can, Tony.
All right, good. Yeah, so as I said, my name's Tony. I'm the owner and president of Assessing Solutions Incorporated. And we do assessing and equalization work throughout the state of Michigan. I personally have 22 years of experience in the industry and I actually started out in Aligon County in, in the equalization department. And Sagatuck is a little near and dear to me because I actually grew up in Fenville. And I worked in restaurants in Sagatuck and Douglas since I was 14, up until I was about 26 is when I finally decided to get out of that because I was working two and three jobs, doing everything and working in the restaurants. So, you know, Sagatuck is, is nice for us, but we since actually moved down to Three Rivers. So we're a little farther away, but we obviously still have family and stuff up in the area. But as far as myself, I'm a master assessing officer. So there's three different certifications now. There's the Michigan Certified Assessing Officer, the Michigan Advanced Assessing Officer, and then the Michigan Master. And I hold my master certification. I do instruction for the state tax commission for folks that want to get certified. I also do continuing education classes. In fact, I've had Peter in multiple border review classes and annual classes as well. So that's nice. But beyond that, yeah, you know, it is what it is. I mean, we like the idea of Sagatuck just because of my history with it. I'm very familiar with the area and I have Don here. And Don is going to be actually conducting the office hours and he's going to be kind of the point person for any citizen interaction. Like, so if they have phone calls or emails and stuff, you know, Don's going to be taking care of that portion of it. I'm going to be taking care of the valuation piece of the puzzle. So, you know, we have, excuse me, multiple staff here that's going to be working on the city of Sagatuck. So in addition to Don, we have Shemi, we have multiple other field workers. So when it comes to doing your guys' 20% reviews, you know, Wilson, there, there we go. Thank you. So these are all the people that work with us or for us. Some of them are contractors, some of them are full-time employees. So, you know, as you can see, we've got kind of a wide range of experience and what people do for the company. So we can pretty much fulfill any need that you guys might have. So and beyond that, I mean, it just kind of is what it is. I mean, unless you guys have any questions.
Council, do we have any questions for Tony or is his associate, Don?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Chris?
Thank you. Hi, and it's good to put a face with all of this. If I'm looking at the 1.0, there are page numbers, so I'm having a little trouble with that, but 1.3's office hours. It says during the term year of the contractor shall maintain four and then it says parentheses 16 office hours per month. How does the four equate to the 16?
I don't see the four.
Okay, 1.3.
Oh, you know, you know what? That's probably what that was is a typo. That should probably say 16 as such as the parentheses 16 office hours per month. So what we're going to be doing is we'll be doing two full days a month or every other week is essentially what we're going to be doing. So we'll, we'll be there every other week on a full day, for a full day.
So then the next one down, A, the contractor shall devote not four, but eight hours.
Eight, yeah, eight hours every other week to maintaining office hours.
So the parentheses will go away and it'll be 16 office hours per month and eight hours every other week.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, this is Garn.
Yes.
So Tony and Don, who will be the person who will be at the board of review meetings and working with the board of review?
Yeah, so your first few border reviews, we are probably going to have multiple people there, but it's going to be Don and probably Shemi, who you don't see here tonight. And then, you know, and then Don will probably be doing them himself at a later point.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, question?
You bet, Ken.
Going back to Chris's question about the office hours, how does that compare to the office hours that we had under the old, under our previous assessor? Is that kind of similar, more or less?
Peter, can you answer that?
Yeah, currently with Diane that we've had, she was here nine to three on Thursdays, usually probably, probably averaged out three times a week. So throughout, throughout a whole calendar year. She was only here nine, she was, basically she had six hour days, you know, she had put in for the last couple of years, but she was always available by phone or by email at any time.
Tony, under contract item 1.4, Public Relations Customer Service, can you kind of fill us in on procedures regarding phone-in questions, questions pertaining to your appraising services outside the scheduled office hours?
Yeah, absolutely. So what we actually suggest to the folks that we contract with is we hope that they have a phone system that has a forwarding function. And we would suggest that they actually forward any phone calls that come into the assessor's call, into the assessor's phone directly to, which will be Don's cell phone, okay? That way, if any resident calls the office at any time, it will just go directly to Don's cell phone. And as far as emails go, you know, we are pretty much available 24 hours a day. I mean, we do sleep, believe it or not. We, we do do that. But, but yeah, basically, we try to be available. Here's what I always tell people, I answer the phone from 6:30 in the morning to 10 o'clock at night is, is what I do. So, you know, if there's a question, we'll get back to them.
All right.
The other thing that I want to mention too is, you know, while we have the customary office hours, if we have a resident that cannot meet us, let's just say our office hours are on Thursdays, okay? If we have a resident that cannot meet us on that Thursday and it's something more urgent that can't wait till the next time that we are there, I mean, we'll come up, we'll just make a special trip up to the city and we'll meet with that resident to, you know, to take care of whatever we need to take care of. So.
Okay. Thank you. Other council comments, questions? Okay, if none, thank you, Tony and, and Don for coming this evening and fill us in on your, your company. Trying to get to the motion here. I guess it's here. So any other comments by council or question, or questions by council? Or staff, Peter? Ryan, you have any additional comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So at this time, entertain a motion regarding the hiring of our new assessing service. Trying to look for the wording on that. We have a proposed motion in our in our agenda. You know, Ryan or Padley? Doesn't look like we do.
I don't think you have a cover page, Mr. Mayor, so.
Could I make a suggestion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please do.
Somewhere in your motion, it should state that you are appointing Anthony Meyer as the assessor of record. So it might sound something like, I'll make a motion to contract with Assessing Solution to offer our assessing services and appoint Anthony Meyer as our assessor of record. Hint, hint.
Okay, thank you. And for what term? What, what are we talking about initially?
Until 2026 is what I believe I found.
Yep.
Correct.
Okay. So is there someone there? Want to take a stab at a motion, please? And you're pretty good crafting these things.
Okay, I'll, I'll give it a try. I would move that we appoint Anthony Meyer and Assessing Solutions, Inc. to be Sagatuck's to handle Sagatuck's tax assessments. I've got some competition going on outside here for a term until, I specified in the contract until 2026. Yeah, Tony, did I cover what you covered?
Yeah, I would say so.
Okay. And, you know, badly can brush that up, but Tony said it much better than I.
Second. I can do, I can do that.
Okay. So we have a motion by Truster, seconded by Peterson to appoint Tony Meyer and his company Assessing Solutions, Inc. as our assessor of record. Any other questions from council? If none, clerk, please call a roll on the motion.
Truster?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Tony and Don, welcome to the city. Look forward to working with you folks.
Thank you, everybody.
You bet. Have a nice evening. Moving on, next agenda item is the budget amendment resolution. This is not for our next fiscal year budget. This is just amended regarding a resolution regarding our current budget term. Ryan or Peter, pick up on this, please?
Yeah, I'll, I'll pass it over to Peter. It's page 35 of your agenda.
Okay, so this is the third budget adjustment fiscal year 2021. Starting the beginning is all the general fund. It's basically the first dozen line items are all increase in revenue, property taxes, the first four or five permit fees, liquor license fees, the parking lot at the end of the Culver Street that we split with the school, Old Beach fees, the concession, some ordinance fines, street end increases and miscellaneous donations. That's basically, Chris had asked earlier, the 10 grand includes the donation that was from the private individual, then all the other monies that the private people paid to have the milfoil first treatment. And then the increased expenses are some legal fees at the council level, some printing at the council level, increased wages at the city manager, increased contractual services that basically paid for Mr. Welsh back here in the winter. With some increased legal fees, the city council or the city managers. And then there's some other incidentals down through there of legal fees. The tribunal chargebacks is a large increase of 20 grand. That's due to a tax tribunal case that the current assessor and appraiser are fighting at the state tax tribunal currently. It's still ongoing. And then that fringe benefits, the $40,000 of public services. Another increase to help pay down the old closed pension. And hopefully after this year, we all have that fully funded if the market holds steady. And then there's the increase in contractual services. That's basically we had for the milfoil treatment, holiday lighting, you know, that's an increase of $2,000. And basically, I wanted to let everybody know, we had the Christmas lights plugged in 24/7 from basically Thanksgiving to St. Patty's Day. And that basically roughly with all the new LED lights, and I think overall cost is only about $1,000 more electricity for those three extra months. So it was that large of an increase. So then the second page is just, you know, there are just line items, you know, in the different lines of planning, the harbor increases, and then some increases off to Old Beach for wages and supplies. And then we get down to the next one is the major streets. It's an increase of revenue for MAC 51. You know, last year we kept that pretty low because of the gas tax, but, you know, the pandemic really hasn't filtered through yet on the gas consumption, the monies that we receive from the state. And then the, the expenses on the major street, nothing was over, everything was in line from the original budget. The next fund is the local streets. Basically, road millage increases. At the local level, the county road millage was off by a little bit, and the act 51 was another increase, but all the expenses, the roads were within the budget. The final one, Fund 10301 is basically the road bond debt. It's an increase in some revenues and a decrease in the interest that we made. The next fund is the water and sewer fund. Basically, it's increase in fees that we collected for the water and sewer caps on new construction. Wasn't any. And we were in line with the expenses. Then the motor pool fund is increase in interest and some increase in wages and salaries. We did a lot of maintenance this past winter. And the rose garden was an increase in the contractual service fees and in a decrease in the interest that we received. Overall, we're in decent shape and I'll have a final report of fiscal 2021, hopefully the next council meeting in two weeks. We can go from there. So basically, the the attached, we need this motion to pass, the attached resolution is here somewhere, I hope. Yes.
Yes, it is on page 35 of the packet. Are y'all set?
Yeah.
Mayor, this is Garnet.
Okay, Garnet?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to approve resolution number 210628-A, amending the fiscal year 21-22 budget as presented.
Second by Leo.
Okay, we have a motion by Louis, seconded by Leo, to approve the budget amendment for our current fiscal year as presented. Any additional questions by council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Chris?
Thank you. Peter, maybe I missed it. The $100,000 revenue that came in unanticipated from Old Beach, what do you think that was from?
Well, well, what it was from is last year, the water was so high and then we had, I think we had people, we didn't know we were going to open the beach. It was rated low to start with a year ago this time. And then we probably had one of the only beaches in western Michigan that was, had access. And then a lot of everything, you know, was really shut down and people didn't have a lot of opportunities to do anything else. So the sales were through the roof for last fiscal year. And this current, the tail end of this fiscal year we're in right now, you know, we're back to the typical beach pass sales and the daily revenue, just about like it was in 18 or 19. So 20 was off the records and And 20, I mean, because it goes from July 1st and through here at the end of this week. So but last year was just, it was through the roof, and there were people that showed out to Oval Beach last summer. And this year, this current season, it's hard to explain because it's split between two different fiscal years. So the current season, we're back to the typical revenue line items that we have.
Thanks.
Okay, other questions for Peter or Ryan? Thanks, Peter, for your overview. Very informative as usual. So that being said, we'll move on to a motion, requesting a motion to approve the resolution adopting our general approach, our general appropriations act concerning the budget for 2021-22 fiscal year.
Do we still need to vote on the resolution 21628-A?
Where is that one?
I believe I have a motion from Louis and a second from Leo.
Well, that was, we did that, didn't we? Wasn't that?
No, I don't think we took wrong.
Question, we didn't vote.
No vote.
Was that on the amendment?
Yes, I asked a question, and we didn't go ahead and vote then.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Let's go back to the motion for resolution 210628-A. If no further questions, clerk, please call a roll on the motion.
Lewis?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Truster? You're muted. Truster?
So sorry, yes.
That's okay. Stanton?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Becken?
Yes, sorry for that oversight. Next item, we will let's see, we want to do an adoption of the budget for the fiscal year 2021-2022. Peter, you want to give us an overview on this, please?
Okay, so basically, we have a balanced budget. The general fund is $2,824,450, which we will be levying just north of 11 mills, the operating millage. The extra voted road millage will be 1.8154, and the 2017 road bond is still at the 1.4. Overall, the millage rate that the city is going to be levying is about 40 basis points less than a year ago this time. So I don't know if anybody has any, basically, it's all adopted in summary form format in the resolution. You have the city council. Overall, you can see the money for the city council, the city admin, the clerk, the treasurer, the assessing, the city hall, the police, the public works, and the planning zoning, the HCC, the harbor, parks and rec, Oval Beach, the concession, and the spear boat launch. And that transfer is a large number. Basically, we're going to park that money currently until we'll have to have budget adjustments for some large projects that will happen sometime in fiscal year 21-22. The road funds, they're also balanced of the local, of the major street, 183,000, and we have the routine maintenance and the snow plowing, 183,000. The local streets where that's where we're parking all the local road millage that we collect. And that road millage brings in approximately 316,000. And overall, the local streets is 463,000. Then we have a balanced budget of routine maintenance and the winter snow plow. And also, we have in there is projected cost of what it will take our share of the Campbell Road project. The debt service that's to pay on the 2017 road bonds, we will levy the 1.4 mills, collect just about 244,000. And we have a little bit of a carryover from the previous years that will take the balance at 23,000. So the road bonds with the principal and interest is 267,800. And that's also balanced. The water and sewer funds, we've estimated, you know, we never know what the new construction is. Basically, the only revenue stream that we have for the water and sewer on this, the new water and sewer taps. And usually, there's some small bills, expenses over the years and over fiscal year. So that's also balanced. The motor pool fund is basically an internal fund that we charge back from the general fund, the local street, major street funds of 263,000. And we're going to transfer in 55,000 because there's an expense that Scott has, and the line item is to replace the oldest snowplow truck was 2009. And we have a budget right around about $175,000. So that's about the only large item coming out of the motor pool fund for fiscal year 21-22. So I don't know if anybody has any particular questions about the current proposed budget.
Counsel, I have questions for Peter. Peter, can you clarify under our revenues for major and local streets, the county road millage and how that works?
Um, yeah, sure. On the Alligan County taxpayers have levied a millage. It's, I believe it's right around one mill. It's on everybody's winter tax bill. It's called Allen County Road Millages. Well, that's levied, and then in May or June of every year, the county basically gives us roughly back about 95%, whatever was on the tax bills. They've got this long drawn out form of this. So basically, when you see your winter bill that Allen County Road Millages, probably about 90, 95% of that money comes back to the city of Sagatuck to pay, to go into our road and street funds. So it's not, we're really not paying into the roads out in the townships. That money comes back to the city to for our local streets.
A sort of pass through, actually, from the county to the city, for once we're receiving instead of giving.
Right.
So, okay, I thought that's interesting, that the council in our public knows that where those funds are generated and that they are returned to us for our use. Any other questions or comments from council? All right, we do not, I do not see a sample motion. So.
Mayor, I'll give it. Yeah, Ken, go ahead.
Yep.
Actually, it's contained in the resolution that we do have, resolution number 210628-B.
It's on page 51.
Yeah.
Your.
So I move to adopt that resolution as written. I don't think we need to read the whole thing.
No. It's like 28, 38 pages or something. Okay, we have a motion by Truster, seconded by Louis, to approve the resolution adapting our fiscal year budget for 21-22. Counsel, one more opportunity to ask any questions or make any comments. If none, clerk, please call a roll on the motion.
Truster?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Peter, you have a new budget to work with. Thank you for your work and staff for their assistance. So, so moving on to our next agenda item is a resolution 210628-C regarding Public Act 152 compliance. This is a compliance regarding the act which means regarding employee benefit expenditures. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A direct handoff to Peter.
Okay, this is a compliance for Public Act 152, and also the Michigan Department of Transportation basically requires the city, every year, there's three different options for city employees, cities that provide health insurance, their full-time staff, that there's three different options on PA 152. Either the city employees pay 20% of the premium, a hard cap, which the state of Michigan dictates every year, what local government should pay for a family plan, a single person or a double person, or this option of opting out completely where the city of Sagatuck would 100% pay for the health insurance that provided. And farther down, I think it's the third paragraph in this resolution or in the description, the narrative, you can see what we, what the actual dollars spent since 2013 in health insurance premiums. And it's projected right now with the rates that I have, that with the current staffing levels, that the health insurance is $88,000 for the current year. We're starting August 1st through July 31st is our health insurance prior, from priority health. So you can see the dollar amounts. And that amount of 88,000, would we even be under the hard cap of what the state says we should be paying for a family plan? If we took the state's formula, it's over 100, it's over $110,000 based on what they consider legitimate costs for health insurance. So this is something that has to be approved every year by the local, the local government. So I don't know if anybody has any particular questions?
This is, this is something that needs to be done every, at the start of every fiscal year, I believe.
Yeah, well, yeah, it has to be done. Something really, we just wrapped it up with the budget. It doesn't really have to be done with the budget, but it has to be done. M.DOT says it has to be done, I think, by the first of September every year. It has to be passed, or a decision has to be made. And you can see also other local units, Douglas, the township, Cal Lake, and the fire districts also pay 100% of the health insurance premiums for their full-time staff.
Okay, questions from council? Okay, if none, do I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented, please?
Mayor?
Scott?
Motion to approve resolution number 210628-C as presented.
Second by Leo.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Dean, seconded by Leo, to approve the resolution number 210628-C as presented. Any further questions or comments from council? If none, clerk, please call a roll on the motion.
Great. Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to our second public comment portion of the meeting this evening, again, we.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, hold it, my bad, I'm sorry.
Get in trouble by Padley.
Yeah, right. Geez, I'm losing it today, guys. Hey, Fourth of July parade permit. Who's going to pick up that one?
I got it. I got it. All right. All right. So we talked about this at the workshop. We have a one-pager here. It seems, you know, pretty limited, limited to, limited on details here. But we did have a meeting with fire, police, and DPW earlier today. And we went over the details of the parade. Everyone seemed really comfortable. Mayor Becken, you are on the call. So I have no concerns. Mayor, do you have any concerns?
Uh, no, none, none, none at all. It was a good session where everyone was willing to help everybody out. Little more to it, other than just lining up at the school and embarking down Elizabeth, the Alligan, to cover onto Butler, back to the school. Roads need to be blocked with barricades. Police, fire need to have, be situated so they can participate in the parade, but also leave if necessary in the event of an emergency. It was really good to see everyone kind of pull together, assisting public works and our staff. So I think it should be a good event. It's worthy to note that the parade is going to start this year at 11:00 a.m. And that was appreciated by public, public safety. I think the, I guess that's about it. Was there anything else? Yes, Chris?
I move we approve the application for a parade permitted as presented, subject to the attached conditions by the Sagatuck Douglas Area Business Association.
Second.
Okay, any further questions? I think Ryan's going to be asking for volunteers from the council to participate. So that being said, if there's no further questions, clerk, please call a roll on the motion.
All right, Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And now, we are going to the second opportunity for the public to address the council. Asking the public who wishes to address council, asks to be recognized. State your name and community of residence. Limit your questions, or your comments, I'm sorry, to three minutes, and you can speak about anything that's on your mind. And I will ask Jim Lindsay to address council. Are you still there, Jim?
Yes, I am.
All right. Thank you for your understanding earlier in the meeting. So floor is yours.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I attended the ZBA meeting last week, and I just wanted to commend Chairman Kabasiak and all the ZBA members for their good work. It's a, the variances that they're hearing are complex, and they involve more complicated matters of zoning law, and they're doing a good job so far. The ZBA passed a unanimous resolution seeking outside independent legal counsel. And it's clear why they did that. It seemed like that was a very reasonable request, given the plethora of legal questions and conflicting and contradictory legal advice they have been given so far. Because the ZBA does not have a budget of their own, they have to look to the council, to earmark funds, to hire an advisor. And I just wanted to encourage the council to honor that request, which would appear to be made very infrequently. But they wouldn't have asked if it wasn't needed. So I would ask council members respectfully to give that all due consideration.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Jim, could you, could you state your community of residence and for the record, please?
Sagatuck, Michigan, Alligan County.
All right, thank you. We'll be gone.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Jane Underwood, Sagatuck, Alligan County, Michigan, USA. First of all, I would like to welcome our new city clerk. I know she will be as welcomed as her father was, and I look forward to stopping him to say hello, since I've known a lot of clerks and managers around here. A couple of things on my mind. First of all, traffic on Park Street, people walking, riding bikes. We have a new thing, scooters. They scare the hell out of me. Secondly, I personally witnessed two near-miss accidents at the ferry landing. One was a little girl who ran out in front of me a couple of weeks ago on a Saturday morning. I know to drive slowly there. And then a week ago, there was a lineup of people waiting for the ferry to board. And there was a woman really quite far out in the street. I think the city needs to put some signage up there. And hopefully, that fence is going to come down. Also, since Oval Beach made so much money last year. Also, since Oval Beach made so much money last year, it is a great beach, and I've been on a few of them around the world. How about doing some upgrades there? More picnic tables, more grills, possibly some rental opportunities. I can remember in my salad day, someone was renting paddleboards. It was fun. I used to fall off them on a regular basis, though. Ken, are you laughing? Okay, that's all for right now.
Okay, thank you, Jane. Anyone else out there wish to address council, please? Padley, you see anybody, please?
Yes, Gary Medler.
Okay, Gary?
At about this afternoon, I was headed to Jane Underwood's going north on Park. I came within inches of running over the chain ferry operator, walking out of the chain ferry. The shade from the eight-foot wall and the trees, plus he had a dark blue shirt and dark blue shorts, you couldn't see anything. When I left Jane's, there was a family of four walking on the east side of Park Street, headed toward the chain ferry. And the utility pole is right at the street, and the wooden fence precludes them from getting to the chain ferry, so they have to walk around the utility poles, and they walked right into the path of the oncoming car. So, until there's some resolution of the eight-foot wall, someone should think about blocking off entry to the chain ferry between the utility pole and the eight-foot wall, getting people to go on the sidewalk on the east side to enter the chain ferry, and to paint pedestrian strips across Park Street so that the vehicles know it's a pedestrian's Park Street. And I think that would help a lot to improve the safety at that particular junction at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you both to you and Jane for your comments. It's always good to hear local knowledge because not all of us are over there all the time. So, much appreciate, appreciated. Any, anybody else wish to address council?
I don't see any more raised hands.
Okay, thank you, Padley. With that, we'll close the public comment portion, that, the second public comment portion of our meeting. We have no communications this evening. Boards and commission reports. Any boards or commissions, members that want to update council any reports?
Mayor, this is Garn.
Yes.
So, we, we didn't have a meeting, but the Tri-Community Recycling Committee received a very generous donation from Brett Demond, five hundred dollars to go towards the purchase of the reusable shopping bags. So, and as far as I know, he's, he's delivered that check to Peter. Very generous donation on his behalf. And then Historic District Commission is meeting this Thursday.
Garnett, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Because I saw it somewhere, and then I couldn't retrieve it again, about a shoe drive?
Yes. I'm, yeah, and that's, I will send that out. That's Kelly Roach, she's one of the members of the committee. She's coordinating that.
There's a drop-off at.
Fire Department.
Yeah, I think maybe, I'd appreciate, maybe you can get a blast out.
I will do that.
I got a lot of shoes piled up in my closet. I need to get rid of them. Okay, well, thank you. Any other counsel?
Mark?
Member?
Just briefly, Mayor. Well, go ahead, Chris.
Chris?
Holly.
Oh, sorry.
Holly, I'm sorry.
Want to go first, Scott? Go ahead.
Oh, very briefly, the radar station work group continues to make progress. They would like to be on the next workshop agenda, please. Russ Gardner would like to present.
Okay, you got that, Padley? Thank you. Okay, Holly, sorry about that.
No problem. I just wanted to report on non-mortarized trail committee. We have had the first responders meet, engineers, and public safety talking. That was very successful to get our, get the professionals discussing needs and routes. The committee began looking at some possible designs and mulling those. A new development is that Craig Atwood from Alligan County Road Commission is just getting ready to do an R F P to look at, to get a traffic study to look at Blue Star, at possibly at Lake and Alligan. So, that's an encouraging development. We're trying to coordinate that with our trail. Craig is included in our meetings and attends our meetings regularly. Unfortunately, because of the freeway being closed, being closed, and the increased traffic on Blue Star, it makes it difficult to get an accurate count this year. We also discussed public engagement, how to go about that, and also coming back to our respective councils shortly. So, we'll be moving into designs of the route. And now that we have an engineer, we're really moving. So, thank you.
All right, thanks, Holly. Any other councilperson? Okay, I'll give a report on the most recent meeting for Council Lake Sewer and Water Authority. We welcomed a new board member from Sagatuck Township. Their township manager, Joe Frye, is now their designated board member, replacing Mike McWigan, who I believe is moving out of the community. We did a really good job, too. So, the board welcomed Joe to his first meeting. We got a report from Engineering Peerless Midwest, which is kind of a quasi-engineering company, and they do a lot of repairs on water systems. They did what we call a well supply flow testing on all six community wells, gave us a report. They all came out in good shape. However, we will need to be working on some, a rebuild of well number five, which is one of two wells located in the city of Sagatuck, which is, it's overdue. It's about twenty-five years, I think, before there was a comprehensive rebuild of that well. We approved purchases in this year's budget for two new pickups, trucks for staff, one of them's reporting, I don't know, I think there's a Chevy truck in there from about nineteen eighty-eight that's still running around that's being replaced. And we also approved, we also approved application for a wellhead protection grant for twenty-twenty-two from the state of Michigan. That's been handled by police and Band and Break on behalf of the three communities. That's it for Cal Lake Report. No other further reports? Open it up to council comment. Anybody wish to address the public or make any further statements this evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Ken?
Yeah, I just, real quick, just wanted to point out that we see some real progress on the mill foil on the lake. I thought it was pretty impressive. There's still some out there. Once the storms abate here, maybe we can get a read for what's left. But I think, I think the treatment really worked, and so, we'll move on from here.
Yeah, I was very impressed with the amount of involvement of the private, you know, property owners. That, that came as quite a surprise to me. So, I think that's a real good thing. Any other councilperson wish to?
Yeah, Mayor, this is Garn. So, just a couple of things constituent issues that have been raised. Just a clarification on the noise ordinance issue that Randall Miller raised, I think at the workshop Thursday. It looks like that's been resolved, Ryan? Curious.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ryan?
Yeah, I think so. The household that was having the party, they phoned in to the city, just inquiring and letting us know that they're having a house party. So, Peter, let them know that the ordinance is till eleven P.M. And somehow, that may have been miscommunicated to the police department as far as getting like a permit. But yeah, I think it's been resolved.
Okay, very good. And then, and the second one was a note that we received today from Wendy. I can't remember her last name, Colson or something like that. Colson, thank you. Mark and Scott and I went down and took a look at her property several weeks ago, and I, I believe what she says with the rains that we had over the weekend, it probably didn't, wasn't good for her property there on that corner. So, I'm asking if we could have D P W take a look and maybe offer some solutions for her. Please, thank you.
Okay, other council comment, Scott?
Thank you. Just a question for staff. Did the meeting occur with the road commission about traffic on Blue Star Highway? Has that happened yet?
Ryan?
Thank you. It has not.
Okay, that is scheduled, though, right?
No, but the, the, the date has been offered for tomorrow, Tuesday, so, not officially scheduled, but will be.
Okay, look, look forward to seeing a note if, if that does happen tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
And finally, just looking forward to returning to in-person meetings next month with everyone. Remind me when our first in-person date will be again in July?
We're going to aim for our first council meeting in July, which is the thirteenth. However, it might be to the twenty-seventh before we get all our ducks in a row, so to speak. Really, I believe Padley is working furiously on this topic, of course.
Right, well, we, we, we seem to have made it through this thunderstorm in one piece, so, all right, thank you.
All right, thanks, guys. Chris, you have anything you'd like to add?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Lauren, anything you wish to share?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor has no further comments, other than I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Okay, a motion from Lewis, seconded by Truster, to adjourn tonight's council meeting. Clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
Great, Lewis?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thanks to council, staff, and the public for showing up this evening. All right, see you down the road.
All right, happy fourth, everybody.
Yeah.
Yep.